Opposed, motions carried. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 1st reorganization meeting, which will be followed by a regular meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment in silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the administration of oath to our newly elected board members. So Jessica, if you want to join Allison and Dennis. Meredith as well, all at the same time.
May I state your name?
I, Meredith.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Item B is the administrative oath of the executive officials, student board members. So if you guys want to join, Ms. Floria.
May I state your name?
I, Neil Colas.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of student board members according to the best of my ability.
Wait, item three is the election of a temporary chairperson for the reorg meeting. Vinnie?
I'd like to elect Mike Issernia.
Any second. Sabrina, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried.
Thank you, thank you, fellow board members. So at this time, the temporary chairperson is going to open the floor and make a call for nominations for the office of president of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Scavo.
Nominate Vincent Reynolds.
We have a first motion from Mr. Vincent. I have a second from Ms. Sabrina Prickowitz. Call for any other nominations for the office of president. Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. So all in favor of Vincent Reynolds as president of the Board of Education, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Congratulations. I have to read this motion. Should I read this motion? I guess I have to read the motion, right? Resolved it.
Yeah, I think you should.
Okay, we're going to read the motion into the record. Resolve that Vincent Reynolds be elected to the president of the Board of Education of the Saichem Central School District for the ensuing official year ending June 30th, 2026. Be it further resolved that the constitutional oath of office be administered to the newly elected president of the Board of Education of the district by the district clerk.
May I state your name?
I, Vincent Reynolds.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I just want to say thank you to my fellow trustees for your support and your confidence. I greatly appreciate that, and I look forward to working with you all this year. I know we have a challenging year ahead of us, but I think we've got the right team in place to do what's best for Saichem. So with that, just a couple of more comments. I want to thank Rob Scavo for his many years as president and leading this board and for your guidance over the years. So thank you, look forward to continue working with you. Welcome to Stacy, a new addition to the cabinet, so welcome aboard, looking forward to working with you. Welcome to our new student members as well. And I just want to say congratulations to Meredith on her third election to the Board of Education, looking forward to another term with Meredith. Meredith brings a level of passion that's probably unmatched that anybody I've ever seen, so. And then also to Dennis and Jessica, welcome aboard. You've got some pretty big shoes to fill with Alex Picorillo and Laura Slattery stepping down, both served as past presidents and brought a level of knowledge to the board that was pretty significant, but just I got to know you over the past couple of weeks, and I think you guys are the right people at the right time, so welcome. And then finally to Mrs. Strombetta, looking forward to working with you. Mrs. Strombetta just completed her first year as superintendent, I think navigated some choppy waters, but did a fantastic job, and now looking forward to many more years to go, okay? So with that, I think we're going to segue into nomination for vice president of the Board of Ed, Ms. Prickowitz.
I'd like to nominate Rob Scavo.
And do we have a second? Mike Issernia, any other nominations? All in favor of Rob Scavo to vice president of the Board for the 25-26 school year? Aye. Motion carried. Congratulations. Resolve that Rob Scavo be elected vice president of the Board of Education of the Saichem Central School District for the ensuing official year ending June 30th, 2026, and be it further resolved that in the absence of the president of the Board of Ed or his or her ability to act, the vice president of the Board of Education be president and be authorized to assume all responsibilities and perform all the duties of the president of the Board of Education as provided by law, and be it further resolved that the constitutional oath of office be administered to the newly elected vice president of the Board of Education by the district clerk.
May I state your name?
I, Robert Scavo.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Saichem Board of Education according to the best of my ability. According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Okay, continuing on with the agenda, appointment of officers, section four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Stephanie, second by Sabrina, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Got it, okay. I have to come here? Okay.
I, Allison Floria.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk
of the Saichem Board of Education
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Moving on to section five, other appointments, consent agenda A through R.
You have to do each.
We have to do everyone? So motion for B, district treasurer, Mike Issernia, second by Rob Scavo, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
If you wanted to do four C as well, and then I'll do their oath together.
Okay. Item C, deputy treasurer, motion, Stephanie Volpe, second by Rob Scavo, all in favor? Opposed?
May I state your name?
I, Alyssa Hall.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of treasurer and deputy treasurer of the Saichem Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Ready to resume? Great. Okay, item five, other appointments, consent agenda A through R, can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike Issernia, second by Meredith Volpe, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item six, appointment of school medical officer, can I have a motion, please? Stephanie Volpe, motion, Mike Issernia, second, all in favor? Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
One abstention?
I'm abstaining as well.
Two abstentions? Motion passed. Motion carried. Item seven, authorizations, consent agenda A through D, have a motion, please? Mike Issernia, second by Rob Scavo, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item eight, designations, consent agenda A through B, have a motion, please? Mike Issernia, second by Sabrina Prickowitz, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Item nine, bonding personnel, have a motion, please? Rob Scavo, motion, second by Mike Issernia. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item ten, policy and committees, consent agenda A through P, motion, please? Motion by Mike Issernia, second by Stephanie Volpe. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item eleven, we're proceeding to the regular meeting, no motion required. So right at this point in time, I'm going to turn over to Mrs. Strombetta for the Saichem superintendent's report.
We go back, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah. Did we miss one?
On page, no, 20. Just there's some appointments as board trustees that could be appointed to the Health and Safety Committee. If we have four members, four board members tonight that want to sign on to the Health and Safety Committee and have done it in the past, I would have no problem doing it again. So Mr. Buckstein?
So we got Dennis, Stephanie, Rob, and Sabrina? That's four. Okay. So Dennis, Sabrina, Rob, and Stephanie.
And then also for the district-wide school safety team, there's three trustee, four trustee spots as well, usually one goes with the other. Dennis, you want to do it?
Jessica and Sabrina? Oh, there was three? You were four?
So yeah, Dennis, one, two, and then three over here.
Okay.
That's right, there were four people signed. All right, so put me down in place, Sabrina, on that one. And that's, that's the, that's it.
That's it, okay, thank you. Okay. We'll turn it over to Mrs. Strombetta then.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to also welcome Mia and Daniel. We're looking forward to working with you. I'm going to take your number up at the end of the meeting, and we're going to arrange for the photographer to come, and this year you're going to be on the board wall with the other board members outside, so. Because I know, you probably know, now at state, everyone has to have board members. Saichem's a bit ahead of the times, and we've had board members for years, student board members, but now it's something the state is saying we have to do, so we're being looked at as a model, so we're excited to be working with you. Last week, we were, had two wonderful, wonderful graduations. The weather turned out perfectly for both, so very, very thankful for that, but we're very excited for our graduates to take on the next role in their journey, whether that be college, the workforce, military, or something uniquely their own, but we will miss them, but we're excited for their futures. And that's about it.
Thank you. And that's just, as a board member, it's probably the highlight of what we do, is give out those diplomas, and this year was a little extra special for, for two of us up here, myself and Mr. Scavo, whose children graduated, so it was a fantastic day, and the district does a phenomenal job of graduations, making everybody feel special, so. Okay. Need approval of minutes, item 13, can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike Issernia, second by Meredith Volpe, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Allison, any visitors? No visitors. Move to section 15, business items, consent agenda A through F, have a motion, please? Motion by Stephanie, second by Sabrina. Questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item 16, personnel, consent agenda A through R, can I have a motion, please? Motion by Rob, second by Stephanie. Questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Do we need to make any comments on this from Stacy? Stacy?
I'm actually going to do it. We just want to wish Mr. Lux good luck in his retirement. He decided to retire last week, so we wish him all the best in his retirement and thank him for all these years here at Saichem.
Thank you. Item 17, personnel support staff, consent agenda A through F, can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sabrina, second by Stephanie. Questions, comments? All in favor? All in favor? Opposed? We okay, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Item 18, personnel administrators, can I have a motion, please? Motion by Rob, second by Mike, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Patty?
I would just like to miss, wish Tara Scully the best of luck. She'll be leaving us to go to East Islip, and she's becoming their middle school principal. Tara's with us as a teacher and just finished her first year at Sammetsat as one of our assistant principals, and she did a phenomenal job. We're very excited for her. We certainly will miss her, but best of luck, Tara.
Thank you. Brings us to item 19, contracts, consent agenda A through J, can I have a motion, please? Motion by Stephanie, second by Sabrina. Questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item 20, committee on special education, consent agenda A and B, motion, please? Motion by Stephanie, second by Rob, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to monthly reports, since it's a new year, I don't know if we have any, but I'll open it up to Stephanie. Stephanie and Mike.
There's a lot going on legislatively, especially the school security bill got kicked back, and there's now new discussion about it, so I was wondering if we could put either now, like a little bit of a faster motion on that one committee, just so we could start working on that again, and then obviously, there's a lot of legislation that needs to be done for funding, so that's my input.
What's the board feel like? I know we probably need to accelerate. One of the things we need to do is start getting the request out to the community, right, the joint committees, so we should probably do that soon, right?
I have the Google sheet ready and updated, so whenever you guys agree to open that up, we can blast that out, and it's ready to go.
Do we want to talk about that now? We're open to formally?
Just, the biggest problem we've had in years past is having too many on the committee, and oh, are we going to keep the numbers the same as far as number of people per committee?
That would be at the discretion of the board.
I think we were at nine last year.
I think we capped it out at nine, for the most part.
Unless there's any special circumstances. Yeah.
Steph?
There was some, there were some exceptions to that, like diversity, I don't believe that we had nine community members, but then legislation, like I think we need a few more than nine.
We need more than nine on legislative, if that's, if we can put that caveat in, because we did, we did have a successful few years of working legislatively, but I think now we need to go in a more aggressive position and posturing because of what's coming down the pike financially.
I think there's a lot of different issues, so legislature, we can break it up.
Absolutely, yeah. We broke it up into different, like pods.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we could, if we could not limit legislative and then make it up, can we make it up to our discretion? Is that allowed?
Yeah, let's see how many applicants, I wouldn't say what to say, how many applicants come in.
Never go from there.
So I can open up the application period, do we have a closing date?
Does, do we, we want to get that out now, right? A look at the board?
Last year, the closing date was mid-August.
Mid-August. So we should probably get it out now.
Second meeting in August, maybe?
Do it for a month.
And then diversity was what, five people?
It was four, I think it was four committee members.
Okay, I'd like to keep that the same.
Do all you say. Might not be enough time, that's the only thing, I mean, what, to get enough, enough people to fill the, so I think last year, I think we did the second meeting in August.
Yeah, so if we closed, closed them on the 22nd, we could talk about them on the 27th.
Yeah, and then what we did was, we, we closed it on the 15th, and then we, we picked them on the next meeting, yeah.
So, so August 6th, so we probably need everything by August 1st, right?
Well, no, why don't we, why don't we do the 15th, pick them on the 27th?
Okay.
No, 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 we had the deadline.
I'll put the applications deadline on the 15th.
And then pick them on the 27th.
27th, okay.
Probably will give us a little bit of a window to any, any shraggers that come in.
Yeah, so let's get that one out for legislative committee, and Mike, did you have a?
Well, I was just going to talk about the
Policy?
Policy committee, well, the policy committee, we've got some dates from Mary Ann, I wasn't going to be available, but it's later this month. The audit committee did meet with Michelle, myself, we have selected a new internal auditor, so we're looking forward to working with them, and I guess they started now this year, right? They start right away, so I don't want to go in there deep, but they're going to, we're going to get a presentation of the reported findings later this year. We had, Michelle, you can fill in everybody else in.
So when the audit committee met, we reviewed the internal audit report, the detailed testing of revenues and billings and receipts, and there were no findings in that report, there were, there were several recommendations to tighten up controls, so I'll be preparing a corrective action plan to implement those recommendations, and that will be on an upcoming board agenda. The new internal auditors, we are scheduled for a planning meeting to discuss their detailed risk assessment next week, July 9th.
Then Mike, Laura served on the audit committee with you, do we, do we want another board member, is there somebody else willing to look to serve on that committee?
I think Laura can stay on if she, if she applies, I'm sure she will.
As a community member, but do we want a second board member to?
And it's, right now it's being you, right, Meredith?
Meredith?
I just jumped onto two health, so I'd rather focus on legislative if I can. If I'm needed, obviously, I'll do any.
So we probably should have three, probably should have three, myself and two others.
So you can put me in that.
All right, so we'll put Rob on the audit committee and then?
And Jessica.
Jessica? Okay, perfect, thank you.
So.
Mike, on the policy committee, administrators and SCTA are working on the cell phone policy that we have to implement for September, so they are going to have that done by the end of July, so we could have a meeting in August, so that could be included, that'd be wonderful.
They just emailed us the July 29th or 30th.
Okay, we should be able to have it by then. The temperature, yeah, we already have that.
Yeah, we have a list of about five or six policies
Yeah, you sent those, yeah.
To go over.
Are we going to go through the committees of who?
We can do that now, so we've got legislative, we've got audit.
Policy is myself, who else was on policy? Right, me, it's three right now.
I'll do, I'll do policy.
Matthew?
Matthew?
That's four, I wouldn't put any more than that.
No, that's it, we can't, yeah. And then we've got diversity and curriculum council as well. So anybody want, who's on diversity and curriculum? Meredith on diversity? Stephanie on diversity?
I was on diversity also, but I don't know if, if I needed on curriculum, like, I'll go where I'm needed. You can't pry legislative out of my hands yet.
You got it, you got it.
If I'm needed, I'll go somewhere else, too.
Do you want to be on any? For me, I can give up policy, because you, if Matt wants it, then there's three instead.
Meredith, if you want to, I could jump on policy.
You keeping track, Allison? Okay, good.
I'm going to do curriculum.
Sabrina's on curriculum? Okay, anybody else?
You need another one for curriculum?
Dennis on curriculum? Matthew?
Yeah, I'll join you.
Curriculum, Matthew on curriculum? Okay.
Do we need two on diversity? Because I'll come on diversity if you want. Okay.
Diversity, Stephanie, anybody, Meredith? Okay, we're good. Okay. That takes care, let's take care of committees, okay? Perfect. Okay.
Wait, who's doing legislative with me?
So you're on legislative and Meredith?
Meredith, all right, cool.
And I can jump in periodically if you need, right? So like we did last year.
Your president, can you be alternate?
I think by, by default, I kind of can jump wherever you need.
Then you're in all of them, so there's that.
Maybe also suggest, like, the budget advisory committee, let's kind of hold that in abeyance right now.
We're going to, yeah, we're going to hold that, yeah, we have a lot going on with the budget this year, so we need to kind of think through how we want to approach community input with budget, right? So.
Our next meeting will have our first update from talking about school closing and what we're looking at from the demographer.
Okay, perfect, great. Okay, takes us, we're good with committees now? Okay. Takes us to public comment, Allison, anybody else? Nope, okay. Board discussion items? Nothing on the agenda, but is there anything that we need to talk about right now? Meredith?
Do you guys all get the email about the other boards and the resolutions?
Good point.
So I don't know if, if maybe we can print them out and go through them the next meeting, because I'd like for us to get involved in some of them, some of them are pretty
I read some of them, some of them, we probably should go through that, right? Those are the NISBA resolutions, so maybe by the next meeting, if we want to look at those or create our own.
We have to join NISBA again.
Oh, you have to join to?
Are we members? Did we pay our dues? So, so we need to pay our dues and join? Is that a leaning of the board?
I don't know, how do, how do we do that?
Well, it's very simple, we, we, the policy, the policy was written so that the discretion is up to the board on a yearly basis.
Right.
So at this particular point in time, you know, although we're not specific motion on the floor, we can just give direction to superintendent as to is there a leaning of the board to move forward with it. We have new board members this year.
What's it cost to join?
It's like fifteen grand last time I thought it was? It's worth it, because Dennis and Jessica have to take training, and it's all through that, the resources are invaluable, right? Even till this day, I go on the NISBA website and look at stuff.
They're great webinars, they support us, and we need new policies, they have pre-written policies that we could actually pull from, so.
What's it cost on that?
Almost thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand?
There's our annual dues, and then policy services are about nine and change, yeah. But then you also do get discounted rates throughout the year for different trainings and webinars and free policy updates from them as a member.
I would love to join, but I think this was a discussion we maybe should have had before the budget. I think it's a lot, like, I know we, I know there's room within the budget, you know, because I know it's not necessary, but I don't know, I just feel like it's something we should have brought up prior.
What's it cost, because you got to pay something anyway?
What's it cost? Because you got to pay something anyway, right? Because you're still going to pay for training, for, for giving tape with Jessica.
The training would be required whether we join or not. That's a requirement by law.
Is it more money if you're not a member? So are we paying more money now to train everybody when we're not members?
Yes, it's about double.
So everybody in here is paying double?
Well, only you and Jessica would need to take it.
This year. But I'm just saying, every year, though, we've been paying double then, because we're not part.
No, we were members the last time somebody needed to take those courses.
And how much is that difference? Like?
So right now, for either of you, it's roughly $400 as a member. So when, each, so if we were to join, it's about half.
Okay. So you'd pay $30,000, and then you get a $200 per person discount, so $400.
Just a question.
It's not $30,000.
Yeah.
So in 2023, for 2324 is the last time we were members, the membership was just over $13,000.
Yeah, I remember a $15,000 number. It took out of the budget.
Is around, like around $1,200. So I, from what I'm seeing.
So let me ask this. Can you provide us with the actual cost to join?
I'll put it in the Friday packet.
Think about, you know, what are the benefits of it? And then next meeting, to Meredith's point, we can look at it, and then if we're a go, we have that discussion, and then we talk about the resolutions.
I'll put it in the Friday packet, all the information.
Perfect. Okay.
I've been waiting.
Steph, sorry.
It's not just new member training. Any of us can take training, refresh, get ourselves in line with things that are coming down from the state. I think if we had information from NISBA that we could have jumped in on for even the reorganizational stuff, we would have had a clearer picture of what was going on. I think we never should have left it. And I get that it was a budget issue, but the amount of resources that we can tap into as a board of ed, we're not, we're not, we should all promise to take advantage of those trainings because they're not just for new people. It's, it's continuing ed, and we expect our teachers to do it. So why aren't we continuing education for ourselves? So that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Meredith?
If we decided not to renew our membership this year, we, we couldn't be involved in any of those resolutions at all? Like, we couldn't even support it as a district?
That's, Chris, that's the NISBA conference that they do, where boards come and they do the resolutions. So if we're thrown out a member, we can't participate, I would imagine, right? Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So if we can get information on the costs and the benefits, and then we'll, we'll, we'll make a decision next meeting.
Just for clarity, we did budget for it this year. It's, it's in the, the Board of Education code. Is that correct?
Mrs. Strachan would have that.
I did include it in our budget for this year.
We did include it.
In the board of ed budget.
So it is budgeted.
It's budgeted.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not like we have to go find the money. We did approve that under that code.
Okay. Okay. Old business updates? No old business at this point? And future items for discussion? I know NISBA is going to be one of them. And then anything else from the board? Sabrina?
Can I just have a request? And you're probably going to do it anyway, Patty. In the Friday packet, the, like, building updates, like each grade and their new numbers for this coming school year?
Yes.
Like, I know we have the old school year. I know you're probably doing it anyway.
We're waiting for the rollover to take place. Annie and I were actually just talking about that the other day, because we're looking, we have a good hold on kindergarten where we are. But moving forward, it hasn't rolled over yet. So we're waiting for Sue Buckberg to roll it over. So we'll get that to you as soon as possible, hopefully by Friday.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Matthew?
Michelle, I think this for you. So I mentioned at the last meeting about the ACs in the gyms. And it just gets really hot. I feel bad for them. Not only do I feel bad for them, I think it's dangerous in the gyms when they're playing basketball in 90-plus weather.
So I did look at that, you know, the giant spreadsheet that has all the capital projects on it, and, and air conditioning in the gymnasium is a line item on there, but there's no cost associated with it. So I'll reach out to the district's architect and see if he can put something together. You're, you're looking for just the high schools, or we could get a cost across the board, and then?
If we're using gyms in the middle schools in the summer, I, I would think middle school gyms as well.
Okay. I'll reach out.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, future?
I do. Rob, if we need an update as to registration of kindergarten, I know last year, there was some glitches. I know we implemented some changes last year. But an update as to, you know, how we're going to do it, whether it's through appointments, whether it's through a Google Doc, whatever the case is. So when people come through, you know, they're not waiting two hours, and then they're being told at, you know, 4:00, you know, that they have to come back. So just.
We did implement an appointment system.
Yeah.
And a lot of the paperwork can be done online and be ready for when they get here. So we have made some changes.
Available to the public, so they, in this enterprise.
It's all on the website. Yes.
Anybody else for future discussion items? Okay. Great. Need a motion then to go into, are we going back into exec? Nope. So we need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Steph, second by Rob. All in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
You might have broken for fastest.
Get used to it.